Welcome everybody to the African Union School Board Meeting for March the 19th, 2013. My name is Mark Myers, I'm School Board Chairman. We're going to have a word of prayer to begin the meeting with Mr. Baker.
Lord's Prayer. Heavenly Father, we come today to know, Lord, we're so thankful for what you blessed this school district. And, Lord, just as administrators and faculty and all the people in leadership in our district help us to be open and keep our eyes open for the youth of this school district that have special needs that sometimes they go unnoticed and that we're the only ones that can really see that or have an effect on helping these students that have special needs. Lord, we're thankful for this beautiful day you've given us and just give us a good evening and help us make good decisions. Jesus' name we pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, we'll go down with our call to order with student-staff recognition.
Under our student recognition, the young lady had the cancel that was going to be here tonight, so we'll postpone that for tomorrow or for the upcoming board meeting to recognize our page, our legislative page. And also for the PES principals report, Mr. Jones is with 15 elementary students currently competing at Millard in academic team meet.
During spring break?
Those students were willing to give up their spring break to compete, so we want to congratulate them and also wish them the best in competition this evening.
All right, we'll excuse Mr. Jones and we'll move down to the high school principal, Mr. Rowe.
Things should go much quicker now since you're not here. It normally goes pretty long. It's a couple of quick things.
This is being filmed, you know. Careful.
We're talking about the high school academic team. They had a great state meet. In quick recall, our academic team did take first place. The individual rounds of it in composition, we have Jared Alton who finished fourth place. In archery and humanities, Nora Lee finished eighth. In social studies, tenth place was Ahmad Manzur. And in language arts, Ahmad Lee, seventh place. So it was great seeing our students working very hard and the hard work pays off and the results we see here. Mr. Belcher shared with me just a few minutes ago that we have, these are 302 students will be taking AP exams. I want to thank the board for 302 AP exams, I'm sorry. And I want to thank the board for the purchase of those. And those are not cheap and I'm sure Mr. Green could tell you the exact dollar amounts, but we are the only district that I know of that does pay the full cost of AP exams for our students. And I want to thank you all for your commitment to that. Beyond that, we just got baseball and softball coming in full swing. Our softball team actually is playing this evening in Marshall Jenkins as we speak right now. And our baseball team is heading out tomorrow, heading to Smoky Mountains to play some baseball in the Gatlinburg area. So anybody have any questions?
Look behind you.
Mr. Jones?
Let's rewind the tape.
Mr. Jones, you're up. If you'd like to present, I know you're just walking in from the academic team.
Well, I certainly have a few things.
We're just bragging on you.
Actually, man, I've been in an academic meet about 45 minutes late getting started and we finished in time to make it back. We do want to mention that our academic team is in regional competition. They are the district champions. They are in... We're really proud of them. They're in competition today. Our future problem-solving team and our students who take the written composition competed today and then our quick recall and written assessment team will compete on Saturday. I do want to mention that it's a, I think it's fantastic that every one of these kids at the beginning of the season was presented with the fact that to be on this team, you would have to give up at least part of your spring break to compete in this competition. And I thank everyone to a T, you know, said, "Yeah, I want to be on the team." So, you know, that's great. We're looking forward to a great showing of them in the region. I do want to read their names real quick to you. Braden Pruitt, Jordan Ratliff, Daniel Ratliff, Cade Slater, Luke Cheney, Jason Lynn, Nate Brown, Evan Kelly, Sarah Belcher, Flanka Valencia, Wade Coughley, Kayden Cottle, Kelsey Adams, Hannah Jones, Madison Crum, Tyler Varney, Abigail Adams, Brody Birchfield, Isabella Justice, Adam Swafford, Kayden Barley, Tanner Hamilton, Hunter Jones, and Aaron Smart. All those students are competing to either today or Saturday or both in regional competition. We expect good things out of them. Just a couple other quick notes I'll give you. We completed our, the two-week period of accepting restoration packets. The last count I have, we had close to about 50 packets that had been completed for kindergarten students, which is about where we're usually at this time of year anyway. We had a new process we copied from the high school. Actually, it went pretty smooth. I know Mr. Johnson helped us quite a bit on the process of giving parents the opportunity to go online to complete the packet and then print it and bring it in instead of having to sit and fill all those out by hand. It makes the process quite a bit faster. We borrowed the idea from the high school and it went, it's went really smooth enough, which is thus far. I want to thank the high school for allowing us to take the entire school last week. But to say, "You're a good man, Charlie Brown." Our kids were excited to be there. They think the high school kids are fantastic and we do too. And, you know, they really liked the opportunity to be there. They did a great job. Although we were a little bit late dismissing school, but we made it back and learned a valuable lesson about time management that day. I have one student tonight who's going to be here. She'll have to come next month. Taylor Akers. She's a sixth grader. She's the daughter of Tracy and Tanya Akers. She got to serve last month as a page for Representative Leslie Combs. She entered a writing contest sponsored by the, basically the region, Family Resource Centers. She won that contest and she was allowed to go on February the 13th and spend a day with Leslie Combs in Franklin. She was ready to come tonight. Her mother is ill and I told her we'd try to get her on next month. And she's a great kid and she does a great job at school. And the last thing I have is we're sending home our third nine-week report cards on March 29th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thanks for coming. All right, we'll move down to the instruction supervisor report, Mr. and Mrs. Belcher.
I've put in front of you this colored copy of the Professional Growth and Effectiveness System. This is going to be mentioned later on in your work to make the district declaration of intent to adopt of which evaluation system. And this is the one that the state has put out. This is the state-developed system. This is option one. There's a second option, but not really. It's a locally designed option and it would involve us having to make the forms, us having to get it validated. And they mentioned that it could be as much as a million-dollar process to be able to do the locally designed option. So our evaluation committee met and looked this over. That was one of the things we needed to do before March 29th. They met on February 11th. The representatives were Jennifer Witt and Misty Haynes from the elementary and from the high school, Susan Cannon, Laura Cooley, and the principals. And they have, went ahead and said to adopt this model. And next year, there will be a pilot year where each principal will select five to nine teachers to go through this system. If you look at the bottom on the front, it says multiple measure for teachers. Our current evaluation system for teachers is a one-shot deal if you're tenured. It's one observation and that's it, except for your summative year, you're observed two times. If you're non-tenured, you are evaluated twice a year. The one thing that made this, I guess you could say more attractive, is if you look at the bold print where it says observations, peer observations, reflection, professional growth, student growth, and student voice, those are all going to be taken into account now with the teacher evaluations. It's not just a one-time coming in and observing. While we were at this meeting, they talked with us about how involved this is going to be for our principals to be able to be certified to do this. They're saying a minimum of 40 to 60 hours to be able to pass the test in order to be able to observe the teachers and evaluate them. And Mr. Belcher and I have decided that we will go through the system with the principals, kind of do some work session, work with Mr. Rowe, Mr. Jones, Mr. Thomas, and Mr. Stone, and kind of work through this together, all the modules, and then we'll go and take our test on our own, on those, but kind of being our support system for each other and for the teachers. The one other paper, the Student Voice, is actually a survey for students. And you have an actual copy of the questions underneath the colored copy. Those are the questions that they said at the time were hot off the press. And you'll notice that they are divided in grades six through 12 and three through five. And our teachers automatically, you know, said, "Well, where's kindergarten first and second?" Those are not out at this point and there's some question about how that those will be administered. But these are the actual questions that will be given to students, for teachers, in infinite campus. The pilot schools are already trying those out this month, but we do not have access to those. We have asked for that, but they said not at this time, only the pilot schools. Mr. Belcher did put them into Survey Monkey for Mr. Cecil. He's doing a process right now that he needed some student feedback and it was interesting to see how the students did respond to these. And you did have some what you might would call outliers, but you did see where a majority of the students did fall with this. If you take a look on the back, this is also talking about the principal evaluation system that Mr. Green will get to do on that one. And it gives you the ratings of the teachers, which would be on the arrow, which is ineffective, developing, accomplishing, exemplary, and the timeline. This current year, 54 districts are piloting this evaluation system. Next year, like I mentioned, we will be, it's a statewide pilot. Every district will be taking part. And like I said, each school's going to have anywhere from five to nine teachers. They cannot be in a summative evaluation year. The reason being is there's not a summative part in this evaluation system yet. And then you notice in 2014, 15, it's a full statewide implementation and it will be part of accountability, 10% in the spring of 2015. The other paper that I provided you is the state declaration, the intent to adopt. It says at the top of it, the district declaration, the intent to adopt. That gives you the two options, the state and the local, this being the stat that I just talked with you about. And so that's what your evaluation committee's come back and said that, "Let's go with option one." That's later on in the agenda. So when you're talking about that, this is what we'll make the reference to. The TEL survey is out this month. We're going to get, at this time, at 5:30 this evening, our district is 22% complete. It's our, we're based on spring break this week. So next week, we'll send out a reminder to let them know that that needs to be completed by March 29th to get feedback from teachers about our school work environment or district. And the last thing I was going to talk to you about were the program reviews. They are due in assist by June 1st. We are, we're getting information out to the teachers, meeting committees. This will be part of accountability next year in some form. Let the doc take care of that. But I am working with the teachers and the committees on trying to get that done. And we have a May 1st deadline to try to have the committee work done so that me and the principals and I can get those in the process. And that's all I have.
Mr. Belcher, anything for you?
Couple of items. The assessment clock reads 16 days to end the course exam, the first one. It reads 28 days until our first state assessment and as well as our first AP exam. Like Mr. Rowe mentioned, 302 is the count in terms of rosters for AP classes. So we assume those same right now. We're doing, I mean, Stewart's doing final rosters for those classes, but we'll say 302 AP exams. Now, that does mean that a student could be taking more than one exam, but that's for a high school enrollment of approximately 330 students. So, I mean, that's really an aha moment when people hear things like that about our school. So that's a positive. So assessment's right around the corner. In front of you when you sit down, I had an assessment calendar for April, May for you. The second page is the May folder and you can see between semester finals, AP exams, K-Prep test, third through high school. It's a pretty busy calendar for our students. So as community members, also as parents, our students are going to be very busy and probably very stressed at times in the month of May and also for our high school, you'll see students in the month of May. But a pretty busy calendar. So that's something for your information so that you have that as we approach that time. Is there any questions with that item? If you don't have questions on that, feel free to ask later also. I did want to, because I know in our last board meeting, this was mentioned more than once by teachers as a concern. You may have heard it other places, so I wanted you to at least know what we're trying to do to meet that concern. The concern was is that career and technical options at our school are lean to what they would, people would like to see. We currently have 14 students attending Millard ATC between the junior and senior year. It's going to usually average out seven or eight students a class. In terms of our class sizes, you're talking average class sizes of 80 to 100. So you're probably talking, you know, from year to year, 8 to 10 or so percent of our class population is involved in some sort of career tech with Millard ATC. So that gives you an idea at least of the scope. I just wanted to give you an idea of that. Millard ATC, Mr. Hamilton, the director up there, been so friendly and also so helpful. I'll tell you something else that he suggested that we are pursuing, but they currently offer health science as a career pathway, electrical technology, industrial maintenance technology, automotive technology, building and apartment maintenance. And between those, those career pathways, those 14 students are kind of spread between them. He and us would like to see more options than that for our students. We're talking five options, you know, outside of the mainstream high school. He mentioned to us that we are somewhat close to Belfry Area Technical Center and they offer diesel technology. They also offer carpentry. Those are two items that he currently does not offer. And so we did contact Ms. Harris, the director of Belfry. And Ms. Stewart at our high school has put that out there to our juniors and seniors, also the sophomores as possibilities for juniors, just to see if there is an interest in it first. One concern that we would have is splitting our buses. And so there may be some obstacles that way, but are trying to, you know, we want to see what the interest is and then go to the next step. Ministers Prater and Mr. Blackburn currently offer, I hope I didn't, yeah, I hadn't said this yet, they currently offer business multimedia and web development. So the five that Millard ATC offers, the two that we're currently offering at the high school, and she also wants to add to that next year, entrepreneurship, which is a business administrative type track. And entrepreneurship probably for our community and our school was a nice fit. And so sometimes big things start with young people. And so entrepreneurship, I think, is a nice thing that they're considering. So diesel technology, carpentry, entrepreneurship, those three items right now are being offered to our students for pre-registration. Hopefully, those are things that our students will be able to take advantage of. Big Sandy Community and Technical College also went that route. Big Sandy's willing to partner with us in relation to career technical type classes. We have already so much offered through U-Pike with our college track that we really don't have a need there, but we do have a need for technical classes such as computer-aided drafting, graphic design, information technology. Those are things that Big Sandy offers to students. So I have talked to them quite a bit about that. Now, there's logistic problems. For instance, if we wanted computer-aided drafting, it's only offered in the Mayo campus. And so then we've got a distance issue. And also with Big Sandy, class time slots don't line up real well with high school time slots. And so Billy Jean Cole, the dual-credit coordinator, she is working to try to shake the bushes for classes at the Pikeville campus that are already here that maybe our students could take advantage of. And so she's trying that. She thinks that those will be more oriented towards information technology because those are the things that are already offered at Pikeville campus. This is an area that our region is lacking in. It's not just Pikeville High School. And there's real boundaries and there's real mountains to overcome. For instance, Ms. Cole shared that their classes are capped, you know, with Big Sandy. Also, the time slots are not matching up real well. So I'm offering it as much to let you know that, yes, we're pursuing other options, but also more heads on a problem than one is much better. And so any things that you can come up with, any places that you can direct us to be looking for places for more opportunity for students or ways that we can provide more opportunities in that area, that's what we want.
This is going to be particularly significant if we have students here who are staying until they're 18.
That was a conversation that I've had with a few people that, and there's also coming down the Pike, the possibility of early graduation in three years. And so this is a high school and I think we've already morphed into, I think we've already morphed into a relationship with U-Pike. It's not Big Sandy's reluctance, it's just simply there's logistic issues. But I think that there may be future possibilities there. But our students have to think and know that it's just as advantageous for them to stay at Pikeville High School that senior year as it is to graduate early. And I think that we're making that argument, but we need to use more.
And something else that students must recognize, I don't know how we're going to get it into their heads, but it is so important for them to have the communication skills their English courses offer and the math skills that our science, because it doesn't make any difference what they're doing now. These are going to be absolutely critical to them.
Absolutely. And, you know, that was a, and I don't want to take too much more time, but, you know, even for instance, an example like diesel technology, Mr. Green and I had a conversation about, lady from Wayne Supply years ago, talked about the job of the diesel technician, very technical, you know. And so the educated person is certainly the age of that in every job that we do. Any questions? But Mr. Hamilton, Ms. Harris, Ms. Cole, also Melinda Justice at Big Sandy, Mr. Roberts, Randy Roberts also at Big Sandy, all of these people have been gracious and helpful in this kind of pursuit. It's just we do literally have some barriers that we're going to have to work to overcome.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. We're going to change gears here just a little bit if possible. We're going to move down to item D on action discussion items. We have some people in the audience that would like to present a proposal to us tonight. Mrs. Pat Gooch is here with the softball, girls softball. And Ms. Gooch, would you want to come forward and say something?
If you like, I can give an overview and then you can fill it. Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Gooch.
That's, that's fine. And a few weeks ago, and first off, I need to thank Mrs. Gooch, the coaches and the administrators, and I certainly get paid to try to provide greater opportunities for our students, but you're all volunteer work and we certainly appreciate that. So I want to say thank you on behalf of the district for what you do with the Booster Group. And there is a request, I think each board member has a copy of the request from the Pikeville Softball Boosters regarding a softball outdoor batting cage. And it's basically just a disrepair. It's falling apart and they would like to provide a replacement cage for this, approximately $2,000. Also like to upgrade this cage area with a concrete pad 21 feet by 80 feet. And not only provide the concrete slab, but also a metal roof that would cover the hitting facility or the hitting cage, and then of course, a net around this. Approximately total cost of $11,000 and the softball boosters currently have this amount of funding in their account. You also see an email there from the Suftham City Manager in response from Mr. Blackburn. And with your approval tonight, would ask that for the board's approval concerning this, that we move forward as a school district to request that the city commission approve construction of this batting cage for the softball team. And one, especially in these economic times, the most obvious is they have the money to pay for it. And two, the reason we have to seek approval from the city commission, of course, this is on their property. Anything else that you'd like to share, Ms. Gooch, about that that I may have not covered?
Just the dollar amounts there. The $11,000 is for the, for the structure itself. The actual cage that we're doing underneath the roof is another $3,000 more. Less than more, actually. I rounded because I'm, and I think that's it. The concrete pad is also separate from that. I had missing information in my mind. I sent you that email. That is just for the structure only, the $11,000. The concrete pad itself is another $30,000. We also had funds to cover.
Is there drainage off of this roof, tin roof? Is there drainage or gutters or does it just drip down when it's raining or make any difference?
We have not, kind of scuttered. It's just a drip down.
Okay. We need to make a motion, go ahead with the investigation of completing this project with the city commissioners. I'll take a motion, I'll make a motion, entertain a motion to approve this request. First, Mr. Baker first, second, Ms. Carter is second. All those in favor say aye. Some of you will proceed with that.
Also, we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize Mr. Magna Me tonight. I know he's been named and recognized in previous meetings, but need to, he's here as an officer within the Booster Group, tonight of the softball team. Most people associate him with this football team, but certainly owe you an overdue congratulations on being the Regional Coach of the Year in football. So we'll say congratulations. We're fortunate, Mr. Rowe shared that in previous meetings that we're fortunate enough to have two Regional Coaches of the Year, you and Mr. Wood.
He was actually the State Coach of the Year for the Michigan, for C-LA.
Congratulations. State leader. So Class A in how many schools is that encompassing?
Forty-something.
That's a, that's a significant accomplishment. So congratulations to you and the guy helping you there too. So, insist. He sings your praises on a regular basis. Congratulations again.
Okay, we'll move down to the action discussion items. If anything needs to be taken out to discuss later, we'll do that. If not, I'll have an entertaining motion to approve all the action content items as presented here. Okay, do you have a motion to approve the action consent items? Ms. Carter makes the... Ms. Cardy makes the motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Beeter, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we move down to the action discussion items, elementary dance coach position.
You also see in your packet, an email from Mr. Jones to board members and the league regarding a request on behalf of Pikeville Elementary School Site-Based Decision-Making Council for creation of a dance team coach. Of course, you remember, what, two years ago at the high school level, we had a request for creation of a dance team coming from the high school students, and certainly, they've been extremely successful in just, what, two years of existence? And now, of course, there's a need for a feeder system to be set up for that program, so would recommend to the board tonight for creation of, or establishment of, a PES dance team coach, which would be a Level 6 position on our salary schedule.
Okay, so, need a motion to approve the elementary dance coach position for elementary school's extra duty schedule at Level Number 6. Do I have a motion to create this position? Mr. Beeter, have a second. Ms. Cardy, second.
I didn't know whose turn it was.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved on the new dance coach position for the elementary school. Okay, move down to policy and procedures update, first reading, Mr. Johnson.
Policy. It's recommended by KSBA, it's an update, new regulations concerning use of physical restraint and seclusion. Take care of your thing, then. Covers, covers the training, parameters of use, things of that nature, and in addition, attached to that is a procedure that supports that policy, and then an additional procedure as far as another recommendation by KSBA as far as releasing information to child welfare agencies. Policy is the only one you're doing the first reading on, just put the procedures there for additional information for you, no action required at this time, it's a second reading next month. You're required to have something in place by May 1st.
It's going to be a nightmare.
If you've been noticing, the newspapers, articles have been continually being printed within the newspapers within the past few weeks regarding this training, of course, all school districts are adopting these policies, so, and procedures.
Anything you'd like to add today?
This is, this is not the districts adopting, I mean, isn't this something that, by law?
Right, it is, it is required.
They don't have a choice.
By the Kentucky Board of Education regarding the new regulations, and this is altering our policy to match those regulations.
There'll be lots of happy attorneys floating around over this, I believe.
And unhappy. Okay, now we'll move down to the district declaration of intent to adopt option one, state development option, which Mrs. Belcher has given us her information on, and I guess we need to make a motion to adopt this, approve option number one. So moved. Ms. Cardy will make that motion, have a second. Mr. Beeter, second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, other business?
No.
No other business to be brought for the board, down to the information review items, personnel report. One substitute teacher? Insolentious, Mr. Green?
Yes, I have a letter from Representative Combs. We certainly want to thank Representative Combs not only for representing our school district, but also for the letter which she had sent to our district congratulating Pikeville Independent Schools for being honored as one of eight districts which reached the district of distinction. This is truly a tremendous achievement for Pikeville Independent Schools, best wishes for continued success. Please do not hesitate to call me or contact me if I can be of assistance to you in any way. Very truly yours, Leslie A. Combs, State Representative. Certainly want to thank her for noticing both the students and the staff's achievements.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to go into closed session, Mr. Green? Look for any business? All right, is anything else to be brought for the board tonight? Do you want to recommend a motion to adjourn for tonight?
No.
Beeter will make the motion, that, Ms. Cardy, second, all those in favor? So moved, our meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, thanks for your presentation.